Safe to lie at school. It's box.
I'm gonna set that up with Chris.
Is there any public input? Okay. Next thing on the agenda is competency-based education by Melanie.
So we put this presentation together based on what we've been doing with CBE and where we need to go with CBE, and then also based on the questions that I believe Kim, you and Anne had for Steve last week.
Yep.
So I have a few handouts. So the first one was an overview, and then this is an example of our math competencies. So competency-based education is a system of instruction, assessment, grading, intervention, and academic reporting that is based on students demonstrating what they have learned, the knowledge and skills they are expected to learn as they progress through their education. Students advance upon demonstrated mastery. Competencies include explicit, measurable, transferable learning objectives that empower students. Assessment is meaningful and a positive learning experience for students. Students receive timely differentiated support based on their individual learning needs, and learning outcomes emphasize competencies that include application and creation of knowledge, along with the development of important skills and disciplines. Do you have any questions at any time? Feel free to ask. Do you guys have anything to add? So why are we transforming to a system of competency-based education? It ensures that all graduates are college and career-ready for whatever path the graduate chooses. The traditional model is a one-size-fits-all education system in which students' knowledge is tested as a one-and-done method. So why should we believe in CBE? To ensure that all students succeed in building college and career readiness, consistent with the common core of world-class knowledge and skills. To build the capacity of school districts, the capacity of districts, schools, educators, and to respond more rapidly to the needs of students and engage in continuous improvement. To take advantage of the extraordinary technological advances in online learning for personalization, allowing students to learn at their own pace, anytime, anywhere. And then to provide greater flexibility for students that would otherwise not graduate from high school because they have to work or care for their families. How is that, to provide greater flexibility? How, will you go on, is how that accomplished? I think it kind of ties in with the bullet point above it with students can learn, it's not based on seat time in the classroom, so students can learn anytime, anywhere. So more learning, so some of the things that we put in, or do you want to talk about that?
So for example, task, our task time that we've established for this school year, if students are, have a gap, or were not ready for the assessment and needed some reteaching. Everybody learns at their own pace and needs different kinds of support, and this is allowing us, rather than everybody at this point in time, you must have mastered this, and then we're going to move on anyways. Anyway, so it allows you that little bit of flexibility, looking at our, at the high school, our schedule, to ensure there's opportunities for that reteaching and that
That was my next question.
demonstration of competency. The one thing, as a parent going through the system, by focusing on competencies and having meetings with parents or with the teachers, if I was a parent, I'd be able to see that this is the skill that my child needs to work on, rather than conversations like, if they need to study more for the test, they need to study more for the quiz, if they just completed this task, those are not, those are behavior competencies. They're not the English language arts competencies that I can say your child really needs to focus on a very specific element in writing. By shifting to this approach, it allows us to frame the conversations with students and parents and teachers around very specific skills.
I get that. I get the competency-based education, it just, it kind of, where it says that, because that's where, for care or their families, you would work it into the schedule.
Yeah, exactly. And the learning, learning doesn't have to take place within the hours of the school day. It can take place, you know, after, after, it can take place around their schedule, because it's based on the students meeting the competency, not them actually being in the classroom.
Thank you.
So, oops. So how are we going to accomplish this transition? Our successful transformation to a system of CBE is based on a transformation of culture, climate, and curriculum that embraces the interconnectedness of competency-based education, universal design for learning, and social promotional learning. So we need a clear mission and vision, a shift in school culture based on collaboration, trust, and cohesion, ongoing communication between all stakeholders, whether that's students, families, the public. Development and adoption of grade level and course-specific competencies and learning indicators, and we'll look at an example of that with the document that I passed out for math. Common assessments, performance assessments, and rubrics, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later on. Reporting practices separate from academics, reporting practices separate academics and work-study practices, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. And then competency is based on demonstration of learning, not seat time, and that's what we were just talking about.
Melanie, how did the CBE and standardized tests mesh, start meshing? We've had such a culture of teaching the test, teaching the standardized test, teaching to technique, so how was this, is it, is the standardized test transitioning the same time the CBE is transitioning?
In some districts, yes, there's, I don't know if you've heard of PACE? So some districts are going that route solely where they're, to demonstrate students' mastery and understanding, they're using their own developed assessments, and not like the statements that we're still using. But you'll see with, when we go over the document, that the competencies are the broad overarching, and they're still based on the more specific standards. So we'll still be covering these types of questions that are covered, that are asked in the standardized test.
Monroe is doing LHS.
They are?
Yeah, because they're the only school up in the North Country that's doing that.
Lisbon has, are transitioning away from it. So it's been nice to see the growth in the challenges of the PACE approach. But even if we stayed with the traditional assessment, the state assessment, which is, we could talk more about that too, but it allows us to assess competencies throughout the year to build to the test a little bit like Meanwhile does.
So one of the questions that you had was, how does staff feel about this? And actually, Steve had asked a survey to go out to all the staff members about the, our big three initiatives of CBE, UDL, and social promotional learning. And so the next three slides are just the results from the CBE questions. So you can see the first one was with respect to competency-based education, teachers, and I believe that some of the results in here, I think there is some para results mixed in here with this. So I have, blue is I've received a lot of training, red is I have received some training, yellow, little training, and green, no training or support. The top pie graph is LHS, the middle school, CTC, and the academy. The bottom pie graph is Lakeway. You can see most, you kind of fall, the majority fallen at some training and support.
When was this survey done?
Couple weeks ago.
Okay, so this is recent?
Yes, okay, yes.
Yeah, I think the notable thing there is, and we did do this separate pairs and teachers, some of this data was intermixed, but the big thing here is, you know, you're looking at about three-quarters have at least some training, and some, and of that three-quarters, some have had quite a bit. So that's, you know, I think a fairly, fairly significant number at this point, and that will certainly go up.
And in the word training, a lot of the time spent on CBE has been on the development of our competencies, not necessarily training and implementing at this point.
The next question was, please indicate your present knowledge. And you can see, once again, blue was very well-versed, red was somewhat, yellow, little, and green, no knowledge. So, once again, the majority fell in, actually, yeah, about three-quarters again.
Yeah, and they're approaching that. And then I think the well-versed, that's about what I would expect, it's not, it's not well, there hasn't been a huge amount of training with a lot of people, but there's been, a few people have had a lot of training, I guess isn't the best way to put it. Most, everybody's had at least some.
And the next question, I think, is the most difficult.
Interesting.
Well, the most difficult question, because it's, you can be well-versed, or you can have had a lot of training, but it's really about implementing the CBE practices. So describing the use of CBE. Blue, I use CBE exclusively to determine how students are progressing and to determine final mark. Red, I mostly use CBE, but still use some traditional. Yellow, I use CBE some, but mostly I use traditional methods of grading. And then green, I do not use CBE. So why do you think there's such a difference between the two schools in some of those areas? Like, if you look at the 41.3% versus the 18.5% for some, but then they use more traditional, do you have a read on that yet? Like, why?
If you look at the high school, middle school, that's better approach. Likewise, had that standard-based model, which may lend itself more easily to transition to a competency method. We still approach things as percentages, test quizzes, homework, and that shift is different for us.
So it's mostly reinforced past practice at the middle school. And one of the other main things with CBE is you are assessing academics and behaviors separately, and Lakeway has put that into place, well, we've always been doing it down there, but we've really been focusing this year on the leopard competencies and having them separate from the academic competencies, and we're working towards that up at the middle and high school currently.
We've kind of piloted it with our seminar classes, which are behavior classes, which has been such a shift for our families, our teachers, and our students, especially senior students. But it's allowed us to focus on those competencies in that class. Not all competencies are the academic, so we focused on those behaviors.
Which are extremely important, too. So, okay, so, our focus is so far relating to competency-based education. District-wide, the work-study slash behavioral competencies are in use at all levels, and what's great is they were developed as the Crusader competencies at the middle-high school level, and then Lakeway adopted those same behavioral competencies. So it's Uniform K-12, they're just called the leopard competencies at the elementary school. We've been working with a CBE consultant, Ellen Hume Howard, to develop competencies and indicators, an implementation timeline, a five-year implementation timeline, and a guiding document that will, teachers will all have access to, to make sure that everybody's on the same page with all of these important transitions. Along with working with Ellen, we've been collaborating with SAU 36, so teachers get some nice collaboration within their content areas. And we've had, with that, we've had elementary school teachers collaborating with that district, as well as high school teachers. We are also working with another consultant, Karen Hess, who is kind of a performance assessment and rubric guru, and she's helping us to develop performance assessments, develop rubrics, and really increase the rigor in our academics in assessing that. And then lastly, we are still figuring out and trying to work to use how a teacher to support our reporting system to be competency-based.
I think the work with the depth and all the work Karen has, I will comment on that a little bit. One thing, when you start writing curriculum, you're probably writing student learning objectives or outcomes, in this case, competencies, sometimes, sometimes the easiest ones to write are the most, are the most obvious, the ones that are easiest to assess, and sometimes the lower-level, you know, basic knowledge, recall, those kinds of things. So it's important to, through this process, to keep in mind the higher-level thinking skills, the higher-level activities, the higher-level competencies as well, so her contribution into this has been important.
Really looking at the application and transfer of the learning and demonstrating that, rather than just spinning back.
You said there were other schools that are already doing this program?
The PACE program, yes.
Yeah. Did they use the same consultants, or?
I'm not sure.
Ellen, our consultant for this has been heavily involved with PACE, so, yes, by, there is that crossover, but until this year, most of, most of this individual's work was with Samuel.
Actually, and Karen Hess has done some work with our CTC.
Oh, not Karen Hess, yeah, I'm sorry, different consultant, yeah.
Because our CTC teachers are ready, and with PACE at the state level. So implementation for school-based, at the middle-high school CTC, we're using Plan Blauk meetings for CBE collaboration, as well as socio-emotional learning and UDL collaboration. And during those meetings, it's a mix of teachers, so it's not like just one content area. You've got middle school teachers, high school teachers, CTC teachers, all teaching different content areas for those discussions. We have the Crusader competencies that have been implemented in the, which one is it? The seminar? Alignment of curriculum documents, so that they're all in the same format, and addressing the competencies as well as standards, and that's something that we have to have in place for our NIASK, yeah, the NIASK visit. And then monthly content-based vertical team meetings.
And we've also freed teachers up for half-days or full-days in their common disciplines, social studies, science, math, and English, so that they can have that collaborative time to really focus on their competency development.
We've had the math department with sixth, the sixth-grade math teacher, as well as the middle school and high school math teachers, for two full days, working with Ellen, the consultant, on competency development. And next week, on Monday, we will have the social studies teachers doing that, and we will have fifth and sixth grade social studies teachers joining as well. And then on Tuesday, we'll have the ELA teachers, also with fifth and sixth grade joining. And then this coming Thursday, our science teachers are going to be doing some professional development as well. Do you have a timeline?
I mean, that's a lot. Do you have a timeline for finishing this whole program?
We have a five-year timeline, draft it out right now.
Okay.
Yes, so it's, it's not a quick process.
No, I get that, yeah.
There's a lot of, for me, anyway, at the high school level, that, not learning the parent, teaching parents about the approaches to it.
At Lakeway, implementation looks a little bit different. We have, just because of the way that teachers' schedules work. So down there, they had weekly grade level meetings, and the specialists have a weekly meeting as well, where they can discuss the big three and student learning. We have leopard competencies down there, which are being reported out on. Alignment of standards, space documents to competencies, that's what we're working on right now, because we've been standards-based up until now, so now we're kind of doing those crosswalks between the very, much more focused standards and the broader overarching competencies. And then we also have the monthly, a monthly vertical team meeting, so one representative from each grade level, and focused thus far this year has been on the math competencies and doing those crosswalks. Do you want to give an ad for Lakeway?
Like Jen said before, you know, Lakeway's had a standards-based report, but I think this is the sixth year, so their knowledge of this is different, and they're, we're kind of at a little bit of a different place. So transitioning from the standards-based of the competencies is different than what Jen's team is going through. So it might look like we're at different places, but we started at different places, so that's why we may see it that way.
I have a question. I think I heard you say that at the high school level, that you had groups of teachers working together, like social studies, for a half a day. What's happening to the students?
They've got substitutes.
What?
Substitute teachers, at this point. Yep, that's how, that's.
For how long a time are they having the subs?
So our science team's meeting for a half a day, so it would be half a day covering classes that might span over planning time, but a day? Yeah. And it's, and at some points, we've mentioned, perhaps considering building in some partial days, so that we've got release days, so that we're not pulling them out of their classroom, but able to work with, with the teachers. So all three at the same time, we can do a lot more, instead of pulling them out of classrooms.
You'll see on this, on the next slide, next steps, and I'll just skip right down to the second to last bullet, more time for the collaborative work, that's what we really are lacking in right now, is that time for the whole, for either the grade level, or especially up at the high school, the content departments to get together to work on this. Because their input is imperative, because if they don't, if they don't buy in to what's being created, and if they don't have a say in it and a hand in it, then the whole, that whole back to the beginning where the successful transformation, the transformation of culture and climate will be there. So the other next steps, communication plan, Jen had alluded to that a little bit. Interconnecting our CBE, UDL, and, what am I supposed to say, SEL practices. So, you know, right now, we kind of, we're looking at them in isolation, but they really are interconnected, and we need to start thinking of them in that way. Competencies, so pilot, tweak, and adopt our competencies. Continuing to develop common assessments and performance assessments, and the rubrics that go with them. Continued assessment of work-study practices, and especially at the high school level, middle high school level, figuring out how we can separate the reporting out of those practices from reporting out on our academics. And that kind of goes hand in hand with how we're teacher pro, and just figuring out how we're going to make that program, that platform, work for us. Feedback to teachers, more time, which I talked about earlier, and then revisit the use of grant money to support CBE work. So is this in the next year, or is this over the five years? That's like over the five years.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to parse out, is exactly what this means as far as time.
Yes.
So what is the status of grant money? You say revisit, what is it currently?
Well, like, sorry, something there. But instead of sending five teachers away to a conference, we're looking at using that money to have somebody come work with a larger group here, or using some of that, for the curriculum work over the summer, instead of trying to tease out days during the school year. So just trying to be more efficient with our grant money and still getting this work done.
I see what you're saying, okay, thank you.
I have a question, though. You have professional development days, so why don't you take some of those days to do the same thing?
We do, we do. We do. And vertical teams, PLC team meetings, most of that time is devoted to this work as well. But it's, it's work that you have to sit down for a length of time to be able to, you know, and one in-service day is a pretty good chunk of time, but one hour, once a month at a vertical team is not going to get this work done. So that's why we have to be creative with how we use our time.
Sure. This is my contribution. So. Yeah, I just to expand, this is, this is, some of the things that we're doing, particularly the concept-based education piece, is not, is not easy. And it takes a lot of work, takes a lot of time. I think we talked about this a little bit, about, you've heard it over and over, we need, we need time, we need professional development time, you know, the school districts that are heavily involved in this kind of work, that are heavily involved in school improvement and changing, making the changes that are necessary to, you know, to adapt to the many challenges that we have, and we've talked about those many, many times, the changes in the demographics of the students, the changes in regulation coming from Washington and from Congress, and on and on and on and on. It's not, it's not like the old days, it's not 1976, which was a very good year, by the way. When, when, when some of us in this, well, no, only me, maybe, I was in high school, you know, when, you know, those teachers did two or three, did two or three days a year, did staff development time, and frankly, back in the day, those were often viewed as wasted time anyway. That, that model is not going to cut it anymore. And to get things done that we have to get done is going to take some, some creative use of time, rethinking the way we distribute professional development. I loved what I saw, by the way, with Karen Hess that day, because, because not, not all the answers, by the way, are found in having everybody available at the same time. Sometimes that's a hindrance, you know, sometimes you just need to work with a few, a select few. And you're not, you're not going to And you're not, you're not going to stop what you're doing, you replace else to do that, by the way. So like what we do, Karen Hess was, the consultant was here, and teachers came periodically throughout the day, and got, and got some professional development with her. It wasn't just like flying, you know, have, spend an hour with her, never see her again, she'll be back, and they'll continue to build on some of the thing, the work that she did with them. So that's, and Jennifer's talked about this already, you know, time is, how do we, how do we do that differently with students? How do we, how do we, how are we flexible with students? How do we tailor the time we have with students to meet their individual needs? And that's some of what we're doing with the teachers as well. But this is, this is, this is hard stuff. This is not easy. It's not easy what we're asking people to do. That's why it's harder than ever to be a teacher.
In that same folder that this was in, I put this in there, can you pull that up?
Yeah, I didn't access the folder, I just accessed the link, actually.
Okay.
So, but.
I mean, I could probably talk to it without having it.
Yeah.
So I'll just walk you through this quickly, and then we can take some time. The first page, so it's kind of like a hierarchy. We have the competency topic, we have the competency statements, we have performance indicators, which kind of define them at each grade level, the competencies.
You have another set.
Sorry, that was a little long.
The, the indicators that define them at each grade level, or for each course, and then the skills, which are essentially the standards. So, and as you go down, it gets more and more focused. So on the first page here, you have your competency topics up here. And then these are the broad overarching competency statements that are tied to the New Hampshire competencies. If you look at the next page, you can see it's the same competency topics, but those broad statements are now focused a little bit more by grade bands. So a little bit more, take that competency statement, well, what does that really look like at K to 2 level, at the 3 to 4 level? On the next page, then, we start to get even more focused. So not every K-12 competency is addressed at every single grade level, or in each, every single course. So K-5, you can see the competency topics that have been identified based on the focus of what's, this is for math, based on the focus of what's taught math at each grade level. So we have the mathematical practices, and they are covered in every single grade level. Numbers and number sense, that's really the main focus of the younger grades. You also have measurement, data analysis, probability, and statistics. And really, in K to 5, you're only focusing on measurement and data analysis. And then the last one is geometry. And you can see the competency statements right underneath. So it's that, again, it's that application and transfer. So explain and justify reasoning when solving mathematic problems. Apply and extend the properties of number systems. Apply measurement tools and depth, and analyze data, and then identify and analyze geometric figures and relationships. So then underneath, in the gray, in the gray areas, the bulleted points, those are the performance indicators. So you're getting it a little bit more focused, because those competency statements are the same K to, actually, K to 8. But we want to know, we want to show what does that actually look like at each grade level? So what does that numbers and number sense, what are the learning indicators that can, in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and all the way up through eighth grade? The other thing with this document, you can see, we've also been working with Mahesh Sharma and on, with our mathematical practices, and we tie that into our Littleton's competency documents with the focus at each grade level. So you can see kindergarten's focus is numbers, first grade's focus is addition, second grade's is subtraction, third multiplication, fourth division, and then fifth fractions and decimals. Not to say that we're not going to teach geometry or measurement and data, but that at each of those grade bands, that's really like the non-educational skill that needs to be learned. Underneath here, in teacher documents, would be the standards that go with each of the indicators. Any questions? And then the same thing is true with, well, now you can see, it's laid out the same for grade 6 to 8, only there's one extra competency added in, which is algebra functions, patterns, and relationships. And then still with the focus for the grade level, as well as the indicators underneath of the competencies. When you look at 9 to 12, it starts to get a little messy, because it's so course-based. You're not, it's not all integrated like it is in K to 8, where you're teaching all the different subjects, or all the different domains in math. So if you look at this one, that kind of looks like it's blanked a little bit. You can see the competency topics are still the same up, up top, as they are for sixth grade, 6, 7, and 8. However, the competency statements have changed a little bit. Most of the courses at the high school level have an algebra focus, so the competencies for those courses would be the mathematical practices, numbers and number sense, and then the algebra competency, algebra has two competencies. Whereas geometry-focused courses have mathematical practices, numbers and number sense, measurement and data, and then two geometry competencies. And then what I did was just include what that would kind of look like. So if you look at two different algebra courses, you have just algebra, and then algebra 2. So you can see at the top, the competency statements are still the same, but the indicators, where you start to break it down and focus it, really show you, you know, what does that competency look like in this algebra course? What does that competency look like in this algebra 2 course? And you would have that for statistics, calculus. So you can see that from algebra to algebra 2, it's getting deeper, you're going deeper into the subject. And then I believe, let's see, the last page is just the same thing, but with an example of the geometry competencies up top and the indicators for the course.
Sophie, you see the progression?
Yeah.
The line for curriculum, what students should know and what they don't.
Yes, sir.
The most fundamental question of all. We avoid it forever, but we've made a lot of progress on this.
So next steps with this work will be, once these are fully developed in all subject areas, would be then the scope and sequence. So just showing when each of the, when each of these indicators is taught to the course of the year. As well as development of performances, after the rubrics. Hence why we need the time. So the last question that was on the list that Steve had discussed with us was the elementary school report cards. So here is a, I didn't make a whole set, but here's one set of K through 6.
I'm good.
Okay. I'm very welcoming. The biggest question I get, Melanie, yes, with the report cards, since we started making that transition, is why? Why all of the detail on paper? Like, there are parents that are overwhelmed by that, where they used to sit down with the teacher and get, and have to talk, and say, this is where your child is struggling, this is where I want you to work. They get that piece of paper, and they're like, why do I have all this information? So that's, that's the biggest question that I get.
So those are probably, you're getting them from the parents that go to the conferences? There we have a significant percentage of people that don't go.
Or that don't, that's, that's what I'm saying.
And won't go. So.
Yeah.
And ours online system isn't prepared for us to report out that way yet. That's part of our process right now, ongoing. And I think as we morph into this competency-based system, it won't be that level of detail that's reported out. It could be if parents wanted to meet and discuss it, but it, it wouldn't have come out like that.
It'd be on the report card.
Right, so we're getting there.
Yeah. And what we currently have at the elementary school, that's a standards-based report card, which is, and Sophie, we talked about how competencies are broader and the standards are much more focused, so you have that more focused detail on those. So those will be some of the conversations that we need to have as to, as we transfer to, from standards to competencies, how detailed do we want that report card document to be?
Well, this is up and coming.
No, that's for us now. That's the current one.
That's the difference. Each year's is kind of, it's got a little bit different.
We're getting information junkies, so I like, oh, information.
Yeah, we're getting farther away from that detail, though.
Yeah, and we don't have, at the elementary school, we don't have the online gradebook, like they do up at the high school, which is kind of that, that, that's their form of like open book, or, you know, you can go and see how your child is doing.
Right, they can see, we can see what tests they didn't do well on.
Right.
But I think the way, so thinking about the way we report out.
Yeah.
And some of you experience it, we have our, our teachers' gradebooks are, in essence, open to you, but you don't know what competencies are being met or not met, you know what they got on the homework assignment, the test, the quiz, you don't know what skill sets your, your student has as a strength or a challenge.
Does it necessarily tell you what they know?
Right. It shows, oftentimes, it might reflect a behavior, you know, the student.
Doesn't do homework.
Didn't do homework, so they got, they got no credit for this, so then their 100-point scale, which is something we're going to be working on as well, it's more of a four-point scale, like a GPA would be, but still having that, that letter grade outcome is, is what our goal would be.
And being able to report out on the academic piece, as well as the behavior piece, but have them feed into two different grades. So you can still see if the student was late or didn't put any effort.
Right.
But it's not affecting their academic grade.
Because when you're looking at juniors and seniors with college transcripts, they're looking at the letter grade, right?
They don't know what.
Yeah.
And which is what they're used to looking at.
Right.
Which is simply the letter grade, it doesn't show skill strengths.
Right.
And in high schools who've transitioned to more of a competency-based reporting, I mean, we're, right now, we're talking about the competency-based planning, instruction, intervention piece, that's what we need to do with our teachers. Eventually, it's going to be the grading and reporting out. And we're learning a lot from other high schools who have gone to all competency-based reporting out, as opposed to the traditional, without blending the two. And I, as, Littleton, right now, will be not doing away with our letter grades, but informing it differently, more of a GPA approach.
Yeah, I think, I think this is, and then we've talked about this a lot, and when there's different, there are different audiences for student performance, and I think they have to remember that, especially at the high school level, because oftentimes, people will cut right to, oh, that, that means the end of this or the end of that. I'm, I'm, I'm not so concerned about, I said before, we can give letter grades, we can give numbers, we can give, you know, four stars, three stars, two stars, whatever, you know, I, you know, the, the letter grades is still what people recognize, but it's not, it's not about that as much as it is about how we arrive at. Do we arrive at that final summity, whatever it is, by averaging the number of assignments and tests and so on, like we traditionally have done? Or does that, does that final summity score, grade, if you will, reflect what students know, or what they can do? That's, that's the big difference. That's a, that's a huge difference.
Okay. Explain for everyone watching, because this is, this is the thing, is that you, you have parents that have a basic understanding of that, so how are they going to be assessed on that information? How are you going to determine that they know what they know?
That's the work that we're doing now, with the performance assessments and rubrics.
And those are the questions that we get, you know, we don't, we, we see what we don't see.
And it changes at the levels, like Jen and I have had this conversation, if you look at a kindergarten report card, it's very specific what they need to demonstrate.
Right.
And you can ask them to demonstrate it, and then you can see what they know and don't know, and you can provide the intervention, and then assess them again. It's very much performance-based in kindergarten. As you move up the grade levels, it gets more difficult to do that, because you're taking in a lot of different competencies at once.
Right.
But that's what we're learning how to do, that's how we're changing our mindset, and learning how to integrate those into our everyday practices. It's a challenge, because it's a different way to think of things, but I think we're, we're making some progress, so.
Is the end, is the end game, the actual performance of the task? You know, because there's 20 different ways to get to the same outcome.
And that's where individualized learning comes in, because those 20 different kids could get there 20 different ways, but still get there.
And the curriculum is going to be flexible enough to be able to incorporate not just one way to do it, you know, show your work.
That's the goal.
That's the goal. And it's that mind shift and that.
The, the integration of the three big ideas that we're focusing on, too. I mean, with universal design for learning, that is UDL.
So, you know, schools who have done this, what's the feedback from colleges who are looking at grade point averages, letter grades? You know, when you think of competency, if someone doesn't know how to get from A to B the way it's supposed to be done?
So remember, well, you might not, when we report out, when we write transcripts, when we report out the transcripts to the colleges, the transcript does not need to look like the report card, do you know what I mean? So you're still looking at that, that, the GPA or the final grade, Algebra 1, this is your grade, this is the one measure of this. Whereas the report cards, which are a different element of reporting, can have different detail. We don't send our report card to the college, we send our high school transcripts to the college.
So on the end of this, I would say competent, or not competent, or somewhat competent? What would, what would a college see if you just sent a transcript?
We, we're going to stick with the A's, we're going to stick, stick with that. It may be, it, it's just, we'll be more clear on how it's derived, at the, at the gradebook level, the classroom level, the assessment level, the, the parent report card, and then the transcript will be traditional at this point, is what we're looking at.
And I'm sure admissions offices are preparing for these shifts, so they're going to have to rethink how they evaluate.
They are, but not everybody's in the same place. We know they're all in this place, so we're going to try to stick with this place for the time being, though we may have more information we could share.
May I ask a question? And I'm going to, I'm going to be negative here for a minute, because I'm very good at it.
I'm also good at listening.
Well, I'm pretty good at listening, though. At, the, the last pie chart you showed up there, it showed some using it, some not using it, and it was a much smaller group of people actually using it, teachers using it. I'm assuming those are teachers.
Some of them are parents.
Some are parents, but probably teachers is what, they're using it, they're not using it. How do you get your, your teachers to buy into this when some of your senior teachers How do you get your, your teachers to buy into this, when some of your senior teachers been around 20, 25, 30 years tenure, and are going like, oh, here comes another program, we got to change everything we do again, we'll have to do it again next year? And I know, because I've been there with human resources, I can't stand the way human resources work today, that's why I got out of it. Because to me, a resume and a cover letter, that's what you need to get a job, nothing else, but it don't work that way. How do you get your senior teachers motivated enough to want to build into this? Are you, are they buying into this, or is it you either buy into it or you get out type thing?
Well, there is, that's a challenge for some, and it's not just the senior veteran teachers that have the challenge, it's all teachers that have the challenge. But the more we have these collaborative conversations, and the more we demonstrate how this is effective teaching and learning, I think that the natural, you know, teachers naturally want their students to learn, and they want them to not just learn it for the test today, they want them to have this knowledge and carry it through. And I know, I could speak to Lakeway, the more we practice these strategies, and the more we have these conversations, they realize that it is working. So, it's, it's not that they need to buy in, they can see that the proof is in the pudding, so to speak. It's not, not everybody's at the same place, and I would never pretend to tell you that that's the case, but I think we, to avoid having it be the next initiative in a line of hundreds of them, we as the admin team have to continue to provide the training and the opportunities for their learning. And I think that Jen and Mel and I have collaborated a ton this year, I'm making sure that at every faculty meeting, we discuss it, at every vertical team, every PLC, that this is not going away, this is our initiative, we're going to tweak it, we're going to provide you training, we're going to help you get to that point. And there's been a lot less resistance because of that, I think. It's a long process, like Mel said, we've got five years, and as, as we're building the plane, as we're flying it, you know, so that, that timeline is going to continue to shift as our knowledge changes and grows.
And also incorporating the teachers in the work too, so that they have input in what's being developed, as opposed to just being handed something saying, here, this is what you're going to do, so that they know that their voices are heard in the work.
And we, we found a lot of success in, in teachers teaching teachers, so that, that mentorship within the departments has been helpful at the high school level.
And reminding them that they are the professionals doing the work, so to just utilize each other, rather than, we don't always bring somebody in to tell us how to teach. Utilizing our own staff has been extremely effective with that, very morale boosting
I think another thing too, is that we, we've really tried to, you know, we have a lot of things going, but again, the, the things that we're doing, again, in one way or another, focus on one of those three areas, competency-based education, universal design for learning, or socio-emotional learning. And as we've said, you know, we, we make a mistake, we start to separate them out too much, because they are, they are complementary, they do work together, one is dependent on the other. But one of the questions we asked in the survey that Melanie referenced earlier was, are the three main goals of the district are clear to me? This was Lakeway teachers, 72.2% surveyed agreed with that statement. 16.7% strongly agreed with that statement, so you're looking at, you know, pushing 90% that either agree or strongly agree that the three main goals of the district are clear. I don't know what data is from the past, but I think most places, particularly one where, again, there's new leadership, there's new things going on, you would, you would take some satisfaction in seeing that a, that high a percentage, at least we're on the same page, at least the goals are clear. Now, how far along we are in the goals is another story, how we may feel about some of the goals, maybe another story, but, but at least they're clear. The same question over at Lakeway, Daisy Bronson, the academy and the CTC, that's all the teachers on the campus over here, pretty much the same, 76% agreed, 15% strongly agreed, so again, around 90% or a little bit better. So, that in itself, getting everybody almost on the same page, understanding that this, these are the areas that we're working toward. And I think Ralph, to your question, you know, that, and I think in some of the things that Crystal said, is that now our, our, our challenge is to make it workable for the teachers, to support them, to help them, because, you know, teachers, I think as Crystal said, teachers will, will, they always want, they want their students to learn, they want their students to succeed, they need, they want that support. They, they do get, they do get disillusioned when things change all the time, and when things go back and forth and so on. So another part of this process that we really try to work with is to try to make connections to the things we've done in the past. So some of the initiatives, if you will, or some of the staff development that people have done in the past, does fit into these areas that we're working on. Differentiation is a, is a way to achieve some of the goals of universal design, for instance, we've had lots of training there. So, you know, I could go on and on, but, you know, it's, we've, we've got some baseline data, and we'll continue to look, you know, continue to ask these kinds of questions going forward, in terms of people's attainment, and then finally, fully implementing and utilizing the skills within those three areas.
Any further questions?
Thank you Melanie, great job.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is approved, it was 16 minutes.
Do you hear motion?
Sound loop.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Can you see paper?
I can't see my screen.
A little bright there.
So, are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, business report, manifest going around someplace? Treasurer's report?
Unfortunately, the treasurer has not seen his report yet for this month, but I presented to you anyway. Including the terrible error on the year-to-date page, where you can see that there's some side notes that actually ended up in the, the print view, just crossed that one column out completely. The only thing of, of real note is a reminder that in the month of March, we had three tax payments that were received from the town. In the month of April, we only have one, so that's because of the way our calendar falls, and extra Mondays and things like that, so that's, other than that, everything is as expected, everything is in balance, good cash position.
Food service update.
Last Thursday was the reporting date for our food service management company bids. As expected with, because of those who showed up at the mandatory pre-bid meeting, we had the same three organizations appear with their bid proposals. Aladdin Associates, which we know as FitzVogue, Abbey Group, and Cafe Services all had their proposals. A committee has been put together with the two principals, the superintendent, myself, and a board member, which I believe is going to be Millie. Our documents are out, and they're too, too big to, to fill the room up, so we moved them back out. Because we have the time, have been able to put the package together a little different this time than last time we went through the process. Cost is not the only deciding factor this time, there's actually a, a scale, a hundred point scale, where budget is only 20 points of the 100. So, I've given the score sheets to the folks involved, and I expect we'll be getting together next week, having gone through our independent evaluations, and hope to bring your recommendation to your next meeting. Someone said multitasking. One of your cafeteria 125 benefit plans is a flexible spending account, or flexible benefit account, which allows the employee to have a payroll deduction made tax-free or tax-deferred, to be used on certain medical expenses. You've had these programs for I don't know how many years, until the last few, they were not well utilized. We had seven or eight employees who were taking advantage of the flexible spending account, until we moved teachers to a plan that include deductibles, instead of just co-pays, and all of a sudden, our participation rate in flexible spending accounts increased dramatically, which is good. Within the last year or two, the Internal Revenue Service has allowed for a change, increasing the annual amount of payroll deduction from $2,500 to $2,650. And in order to allow our employees to maximize that, again, at no cost to you, no additional cost to you, we actually had to modify our plan. So there are a series of three resolutions. What I would ask is just a motion to allow the amendment of our plan, including those three resolutions, to bring this from the $2,500 to the $2,650, and just to keep everything kosher, to designate that the superintendent, the business administrator, as positions, not even necessarily as the names, are you authorized representatives to go ahead and execute these changes and continue to manage the program going forward.
Okay, we'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the amendment to the flexible spending account as presented on the resolution.
And indicate who to?
Indicate the business manager and superintendent to act as agents. We have the board.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor? Motion carries.
Almost done.
Actually, that happened.
With the collective bargaining agreements that we had worked on over the last fall, one of which was secured by the voters, one was not. In addition to moving medical insurance to school care, we were moving dental insurance from Northeast Delta Dental, presently under Health Trust, to Cigna Dental, which is under school care. With the teachers agreement not being approved, we move into a status quo, with the expiring agreement standing pat, but I can't let that happen, and we need to have an amendment so that we can move their dental to Cigna also. So we had a memorandum of agreement for modifying the status quo, CBA. It was voted on, ratified by the union on Thursday and Friday of last week, and I would like you to ratify it also, so we can put it in place. Our opening enrollment period actually opened on the first of May, it would be nice to have everybody in the same boat.
I'll make a motion that we ratify the memorandum of agreement for modification, teachers' LTA for the school care dental plan, option DP1.
Second? Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you sure? Got more papers there, so. You see, I see them.
No, I think. So unfinished business, snow makeup days, Steve, do you want to talk about that, please?
Yeah, in your board mailing, I did, shared with you the, the numbers generated, the buildings, and how, with the, with the hours that we missed so far, and we're, we're still well ahead of the required minimum hours by the state, as we were last year, for that matter, with four missed days. This year, we had just the two missed days and several either late arrivals or, or early releases. So, according, according to the math, we, elementary attendance is a little over 1,000 hours, the requirement's 945 hours, middle school, high school, the requirement of 1080, and we're about 68 hours above that number at this point. So, at this point, we're, we're well within the requirements by the state. In terms of other, other schools, I know the principals, we talked about this a little bit, some schools have students come back, some schools don't, I think it's kind of a mixed bag, is that a fair way to, fair way to characterize it, I guess?
So, would you like a consensus?
Yeah, I think it'd be good if we could, so the family, we are getting a few inquiries from families, and I think, maybe, there's no guarantees, that maybe we won't have any more lost time, you never know.
Now you've done it.
Probably shouldn't say that. No, I, I think that, and again, the, the idea, of course, that this is with students, you would intend for staff to, to fill the contracted days, and, you know, we talked a little bit earlier about the, the fact that we, we do need time, we do need staff development time, that's not an ideal time to do it, the end of the year frankly, better than not having it at all.
So is there a board consensus? In school on time?
There's a lot.
Yes.
Last day of school for students will be as, probably still in the calendar, for parents to plan accordingly.
Is that a new dismissal? Is that a new dismissal?
Yes, it traditionally has been.
Sure, that's out there.
Yeah.
If the kids use.
I thought anybody was watching, right?
They're starting to watch more and more, I understand.
Next then, one, the agenda is new business. We could put summer school board meetings there, and we usually have a couple in July. So I guess I need to know if anybody's taken any vacations, when they're going to take any vacations. I've also asked Steve for the administrative vacations. I was thinking that, I was thinking, that instead of having the, the two meetings that's listed in July, which happens to be, the 16th, that our last meeting would be June 18th, and then go back and either have a meeting on the 16th, on the 23rd of July. And the other thought was that in August, we have our two regular board meetings, and the other two meetings would be 13th and 27th, we would be working on the budget.
August 13th and 27th.
Yeah, so, we don't have to decide tonight, folks, we have another meeting, we'll figure out then, there you go. Okay, the other thing I have is committee membership. Personnel will be Millie and Kim, facilities will be Jim and Greg, policy will be myself and Kim, and Jim and I will resume negotiations in the fall. I think I developed a listing of the committee membership, these meetings have to be posted, all except negotiations, minutes have to be kept, that's in your thing. I also did up a new matrix for the year to 2018, 19, beginning of July, so. I also did up a new matrix for the year to 2018, 19, beginning of July, so that's for everybody to look at, and that's how we set our agendas. Okay, with that being said, committee reports, next on the agenda. Is there any person on committee reports?
We did meet, we met April 30th with the superintendent, Kim Woodson, and I, and we have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay. Okay?
Yeah, all right, on job descriptions.
Okay. Facilities, I'm not aware of any. So the policy team has been added again.
I guess.
Because they love it so much, really.
Good, it's great, you guys, thank you, that one.
A couple of these were tabled for last time, but let me see, I have, the person I have up here is JICFA, is that right? Or my... JICD, because what's listed first? I know, but I don't know where it is on the thing here. All right, anyway, JICD. Kim, do you want to respond to that one?
Yeah, please. We met with both building principals to discuss... Basically, the gist of it was, we wanted to adjust the language on what constituted an in-school suspension. Thank you. And we just made some minor adjustments to that language as to what that due process So since we have one copy of it, under levels of discipline, we added a in-school suspension. The building principal or designee is authorized to issue in-school suspensions for any conduct that causes material or substantial disruption to the school environment, interferes with the rights of others, presents a threat to the health and safety of students, employees, and visitors, violates other board policies, is otherwise inappropriate or prohibited by law. Spelled that out very nicely, I think. Under due process procedures, we did add in-school suspension, which included that the pupil must be given the opportunity to present his or her side of the story. The pupil and at least one parent or guardian must be notified of any in-school suspension, including length and reason for the disciplinary action. And that, those were the only adjustments we made to policy JICD.
So the next policy is JICFA is hazing. The one thing that we changed on this one was, under the statement of policy, is the policy of the Lawton School District. And we said that this policy is available on the district website, period, and then we made sure that the legal references were there. And this would be, today would be our first read and adoption for that policy. The policy JLF, reporting child abuse, neglect. The Lawton School Board requires all district employees to receive routine training or information on how to identify child abuse and neglect. And then the principal or administrator of each school shall post a sign in a public area within the school that is readily accessible to students in the form provided by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services Division for Children, Youth, and Families. It contains instructions on how to report child abuse or neglect, including the phone number for filing reports and information on accessing the division's website. This is for a first read and adoption tonight. The other thing that we did work on this time, too, was KLG, which is relations with police authorities. And the statement of policy is, it is the policy of the Lawton School District to cooperate with law enforcement agencies to the extent necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students, staff, and visitors to the school. The statement of purpose, the Lawton School District will utilize an interactive security program called RAVE in collaboration with local law enforcement agencies to engage in security and safety.
And what's RAVE? That's just the company's name. It's just the mobile app that we...
Okay, okay, thank you. So we did do that one, and the first read and adoption will be for tonight. And it was the... Oh, yes. And then the last, but not least, we do have policy EF, which is called food service management. It was adopted back in 2006, and is quite out of date. And because we are going into, we have food audit, there are some deficiencies in that, so Tom is going to have to work with us to develop and implement perhaps another policy. And we'll have, hopefully, in time for the next group.
The big thing here is that this relates to work employees.
Right, that's what we are trying to rescind this policy.
If everyone's in agreement with that.
If everyone's in agreement with that. So we have, what, one, two, three, four policies that we need to...
Motion. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept policy JICD, JICFA, and JLF, all for second reads and adoptions. Policy KLG for a first read and adoption, and policy EH for...
It's actually EF.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, it is EF, to food service management to rescind.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, so I think we'll answer the superintendent's question.
Okay, lead off, a little bit of legislative news, it's been kind of quiet from Congress today.
Uh-oh, what hasn't?
Yeah, well, the news, anyway, but I know a lot's going on. Senate Bill 193, which was a voucher, school choice, school flexibility program, which, again, has been, had lots of news coverage and lots of discussion, and, you know, various, many, many, many iterations thereof, has generally been opposed by public school organizations and others. Was sent, finally, that bill was sent to interim study last week, however, it did resurrect itself, or was resurrected and attached to another bill back in kind of its original form, not the form that had kind of survived through most of the session. So that one is still out there. I think Ann is giving you a hot off the press.
Right.
Yeah, 344 PM, that's not bad. So again, it's back, and we'll go through the process in the coming days, certainly, and I know that it's going to receive a lot of attention. You know, and I think this is a very politically volatile bill, it's a very politically volatile topic, because I think people, people want kids to get good education, they want, desperately want kids sometimes that don't always have all the choices or all the supports available to them to explore, if you give them other options. That's something that's always a part of the process. However, I think at the same time, when we start talking about funding and funding public education, and the cost of funding, and the cost of the local taxpayers, and so on, we have to keep the balance in mind. And if we create new programs, then there's choices to be made, whether to create revenue stream, to support those new programs, or to take it out of existing revenue, which is not unlike what we do at the local level, of course. And so I think that's also part of the discussion. So we've heard everywhere, everywhere from, you know, lots and lots, depending on what form the bill is, and how much it could possibly cost in terms of adding more students outside of the public school realm, and where the expense of that would come from. Would it be deducted from existing school budgets? Would it be passed on to towns to pay for? And that's the gist of what's happening. So again, I don't, I think I, yeah, go ahead.
I can answer you both.
I know you worked that.
Senate Bill 193 has been attached to House Bill 1636, which is talking about preparation for teacher education. And House Bill 1636 was also amended to include requirements that school districts offer unused facilities or unused building space to charter schools for lease. So anyway, what has happened, or will happen, according to the lawyer down there, is three scenarios. The House can vote to concur with the latest Senate version, now found in House Bill 1636, and a vote to concur passes, if that happens. The bill goes to the governor's desk for signature. The House can vote to non-concur with referral to committee of conference. If this motion passes, a committee of conference will resolve with a small group from the House and a small group from the Senate seeking to reach resolution on the final language. If the bill goes to a committee of conference, it is highly likely that resolution will be reached. The committee of conference will be made up of supporters of Senate Bill 193, and while its meetings will be public, most of the action will be behind the scenes. The House can vote to non-concur, and if this motion passes, the bill dies once and for all. But my understanding totally is that House Bill 1636 and Senate Bill 193 are not by passing. So please contact your representatives to vote no.
Okay, last week, or week before last, actually, we did have a conference that I went to along with some teachers, Universal Design for Learning. As we said before, we will continue to send some individuals out to conferences. We'll also try to mix in as much as we can onsite support and staff development. But that conference was a national conference, there is some value to be gained, certainly, from getting a chance to see what's happening across the country. I did have the, I think one of the more interesting parts of that was, was that there was an architecture firm that was there, that I spent quite a bit of time with. It's an architecture firm, actually, that I worked with back in the state of Kansas. And their big, their big work and their big focus is, is how do we design schools differently to reflect the principles of universal design? And of course, which I think is really kind of, it's kind of come full circle, because universal design started as an architectural movement. How do we make everything physically accessible? Then it became part of an educational movement. How do we make every learning accessible? And now it's coming kind of back to the architectural piece of it. How do we redesign schools in terms of architecture to make the learning more accessible? So it's kind of a, so that was good. That was a good connection. I've been in touch there, so there's something, you know, thinking going forward that certainly bears watching and probably some reaching out as we start to ponder down the road, future Lakeway, what the new Lakeway might look like. There's a conference, Adversity and Resilience, Trauma Sensitive Schools, I sent you information on that. That's May 16th in Manchester. We have 10 people going from the district. I will be going, as well as counselors, several teachers, and any board members who would like to join us that day. This is a, Crystal can speak to this, she's heard Cassie Ackley, who's one of the lead speakers at this event, I think it made a big impression, if you want to say a few words about what you might expect to hear from her.
I saw like a very broad overview. I think what you guys are going to see next week will be much more specific. But I know she's working with, through the Project GROW grant, she's working with the Bethel-Horn School District on trauma-informed schools, and we've been collaborating with them through this work as well. So it's really kind of pertinent to our population right now, so it's imperative that our teachers and staff and board have a solid understanding of what that work looks like, because it's going to be really important as we move forward.
Okay, we got final approval on the school safety grants, all the grants that we applied for were funded, and final approval through all the different hoops that have to be jumped. So in the near future, we'll be coming back to those and looking at what we need to do going forward to access those, and what, how we, you know, the decisions we'll need to make regarding whether to accept or not to accept, and so on. And I got notified today that there's another chunk of money that's been added to this program, that schools will be applying for, that, again, with a focus on security. And I think we're going to see some federal dollars, this is maybe, I don't know if it's a reflection of that, but I would suspect we'll continue to see some federal dollars, and probably increase in federal dollars for things that are related to security measures that schools can take. Driver's education. We've had many students go through the program already. I met with Mike the other day, and Dwayne, Cody, and we talked a little bit about the program, and the number of students that have gone through it, and the satisfaction of those who have been a part of the program. I think that the indication of that is very good, very strong. And we talked a little bit about the future, and that's something, I don't have a formal proposal to bring up the board tonight, but I will in the very near future, as we look ahead, how that program might look a little bit different, how our role might look a little bit different. But one of the players, the role's not going to change, and that's the Chevrolet, they're going to provide the car for another year. And so that was excellent news. And again, that definitely helps keep the costs more affordable, and is a great service to the kids and the community, so we appreciate that. Appreciate Dwayne, Cody, and Lawton Chevrolet for that. So we do have that possibility going forward, and like I said, we'll need to take a look at the specifics of the program in the near future, future board meeting. We got, in your documents, there is a short little document, Transition Compliance Report, again, showing 100% compliance. A kid in Kelly the other day, or about another report, another 100% compliance, but our program that works with our special needs students and other student support continues to give very, very strong reviews and high compliance reviews in the state, so that's always good to see. We are working with, Ann and I are working with the town manager and the select board to have our quarterly meeting in the very near future. So that will be happening in the upcoming days. We're still waiting for confirmation from them, but that's certainly something we're committed to making sure we take care of. And the other thing I did write you about, we did put a few air conditioning units down Lakeway over the break. We've already used them.
Using the first day back.
Yeah, it was kind of ironic, the first day back from the April break, and it was, what, 87 degrees outside? So they were much appreciated from the very start. You know, and I think you all, kind of, we won't talk about this many times over, but we had the opportunity to get the units and get the work done, so we went ahead and got that taken care of. So, and I imagine, well, I don't know if they were used today, they might have been used. used today, but they will be certainly going forward. So that was a library will get that done.
Hot kindergartners are not fun kindergartners.
For sure. And that concludes my report.
I have just one thing to say. This, I believe, is Teacher Appreciation Week, and the board does appreciate everything that you teachers do. Amen.
You make us look good.
Okay, so I guess we need to go around.
Make a motion entering into non-public session under paragraph 2, section 3 of the RSA 91A colon 3 of the right to know law 4, number 2, the hiring of any person as a public employee, and number 3 matters which are, which if discussed in public would likely adverse, adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. With us, the superintendent, clerk, business manager, and the two principals, please.
Okay. All in favor?
Greg Cook.
Kim Woodson.
Sorry, I was doing it first.
Only now, Sue.
Janine.
And we...
Why can't you switch seats?
I'll be all right.
Yeah, they do, they put it there.